Good evening, I'd like to call the meeting to order, we've got a full quorum here tonight. Warren, would you give an invocation, please, sir?
Yes, please stand. Do you want me in prayer, please? Heavenly Father, we come before thy throne of grace, we ask for your guidance, your strength and your courage. Give us guidance in this meeting tonight that we do the right thing for our community. Guide and lead us always, be with Chuck Bottorin in his hammock this time. In their time of grief, that you comfort their family. And lead us always as neighbors and friends in this community, in his name we pray, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So, having no communications from the audience. There are... We're gonna strike number thirteen from the agenda, and... Number fourteen from the agenda. I'd like to get the minutes from the budget hearing on September twenty first, like a motion to accept those.
So move.
Second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Same goes for the regular meeting on September twenty first, following the special meeting.
Take a motion, we accept them.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Minutes from the special meeting on September twenty fifth.
So move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Minutes from the tax rate special meeting on September twenty fifth.
So move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Minutes from the special meeting on October the fourth.
I make that motion to accept them, Mayor.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. There's a lot going on right now. So I received a letter from the GLO. They've reviewed our application and determined us to be eligible for the Community Development Block Grant. That's one point nine three million dollars for Lakewood Street improvements. We are now in a position to begin to start planning and moving forward with that. You can see that Camelot is under repair right now, and it's being paved as we speak. From Ivanhoe Drive up to Charmaine Dam. We have another addition that we'd like to do. Would you pass that down, please? This is from Charmaine Drive South to Durwood. That four hundred or two hundred feet stretch, that long block. We got a bid from Texas Materials to, while they're here, to go ahead and complete that at the cost of eighteen thousand three hundred and seventy-nine dollars. I could have approved this without coming to y'all, but I would appreciate... I wanted to share with you and get a motion to move forward with this.
So clarifying, Mayor, this is, would be using excess funds from the...
We have seventy-some thousand dollars left in the bond fund. And this would take eighteen thousand dollars of that remaining seventy-five thousand or seventy thousand, whatever it is. And use eighteen three seventy-nine to finish paving Camelot all the way from Charmaine Drive South to Durwood. So we'd have a complete circle around some of the most complete, most traveled roads.
That's a great idea, thank you.
So do I have a motion to move forward?
Motion to move forward.
Second.
All in favor?
Mayor, I'm gonna stand for that vote, as I have a personal interest in that road.
That's okay, I can appreciate that.
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. C.D., you could text Victoria and tell them it's a go. They'll be able to start on that tomorrow, and we'll have it finished tomorrow. That'll be really nice. On the seven point nine million dollar grant, we've got the notice to proceed. Pre-construction meeting has been done, contracts have been let. We're beginning to move forward with that, that's multi, multiple projects throughout the city. That's the one that David Marshall will be speaking about later, all the... That portion which the city will be doing, that portion of the work which the city will be doing with regard to culverts and ditches, which will save us a lot of money in the long run. Doesn't mean our guys are cheap. There was a joint workshop on the proposed Highway sixty-nine Tuesday evening at the courthouse. Councilman Warren and I went there to participate, or not to participate, but to listen and observe what is being planned. I don't know if you've had a chance to look at the proposed routes, there's about four of them. As it turns out, it's heavy on the proposed. There have already been changes that have just not been made available to the public yet. There'll be a public meeting in Woodville on Tuesday, October the twenty-fourth, from five to seven, and another one at the Warren ISD Board Room from five to seven on October the twenty-sixth. At these two meetings, you'll be able to ask questions of the project engineer. He was there Tuesday night and fielded a lot of, lot of questions that had to do with, with real concerns. I don't have the, I had the schedule here, I don't have it at the moment. But they're not planning on breaking ground until 2030. There's a lot of things that have to be done. T.E.S., huh?
A lot to change by then.
That's, yes, that's true, they don't, they have not settled on a route. You know, everyone was thinking that it was going to be the abandoned railroad route easement. There were questions asked about taxpayer money having bought that already, and that, you know, why would you go a different route? Or why would you consider a different route? That easement was purchased back in the eighties, so it's, things have changed. There's still a lot that, that needs to be considered, and they, Tech Dot is really asking for input. They want to know the impact that it's going to be, depending on which route they go. They're gonna have to decide something by 2025. I know, it's a long way out there.
It'll probably take them ten years to complete that road.
Yeah, I'll never see it. No, I plan on seeing it, I'll be here. So now I'd like to jump to item number ten on the agenda, the burn ban. I know that the, that the burn ban, the way that we did it this last time caused a lot of confusion and consternation. I want to take full responsibility for having not followed Tyler County's lifting of the burn ban. Our heart was in the right place, we were trying to be overly cautious. Just because Tyler County lifted the burn ban didn't mean we should or that we had to. We elected not to. Once the burn ban was lifted, now that we were in this, this mode, we had to post seventy-two hours in advance. We got the word on Friday, the soonest we could have had a special meeting would have been Sunday. And the burn ban went back into effect Monday. So what I'm going to ask counsel is that we revert back to the way we used to do it, and that we automatically lift our burn ban in sync with, we take our lead from Tyler County. I spoke with Judge Powers about it. He doesn't just do it willy-nilly, he looks at numbers and, and weather forecasts and gets a lot of information from different places. When he lifted it last time, I think it was a day and a half or two days. He got a lot of flack for having lifted it and put it back in place, but Spurger was a powder keg, and he hadn't really considered that. So he has to look at, at the bigger picture, and although we were well within our rights of, of not lifting it with him, I think it did, it did cause a lot of confusion because people were getting notifications from Tyler County that, that it had been lifted. They were calling the sheriff's dispatch and being told that it had been lifted. And we just need to be cleaner with it, that's all.
Well, in an effort to avoid confusion and, and in an effort to mitigate any unnecessary strain on our police, or our fire department, I make a motion that we go back to coordinated with Tyler County.
Thank you, I think that would be prudent, do we have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, I think that will make a lot of people...
I think that we need to go back, excuse me, and give Mayor approval on that one. The Mayor has the approval to lift the burn ban per county judge.
Also move that the Mayor has the authority to lift the burn ban and implement the burn ban according to Tyler County's guidance.
So the, the way that it, that works is if the burn ban is set, I have to, I can declare a proclamation, and it will be a burn ban that will run for seven days. After that, we have to have a special meeting to extend it to thirty days or beyond. So I can set the burn ban in sync with the county judge, and if it continues on, then we would have to have a special meeting. But I'm okay with the burn ban being lifted automatically when Tyler County lifts theirs.
Right, that's, well, councilman Gregory, to modify his motion, that you have the authority to do that.
Okay.
I will modify my motion to give the Mayor authority to do so.
Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Third time's the charm.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
We don't wanna give you too much power.
I don't want too much power, I don't want any power. Municipal court activity. Last month, we collected in the court thirty-seven hundred and seventy-six dollars. Judge Jackson is, is, is doing a wonderful job, our law enforcement is doing a wonderful job. There are a lot of people unhappy with both the police department and the judge for them being issued citations for breaking laws of the road. But at this rate, you know, thirty-seven hundred dollars, if it's thirty-five hundred dollars a month, that comes to forty-two thousand dollars a year. We don't get to keep all that. The state gets roughly half of it, well, a third of it anyway. So that's that, now the, Baker, are you ready to give Lemon's report, or no? We're, you're not really ready, but... We're not, we don't have real bullets up here.
Yeah. Okay, for the month of September, we had thirty-two calls for service, we had twenty traffic stops, sixteen citations, nineteen warnings, eight offense reports, and one felony arrest. And a lot of people not happy with citations.
Yeah, that's understandable.
Do we have, is there a lot of stop sign violations?
There, there are, there's, people just kind of act like they're not there a lot, and that's one of the biggest things that we have, is that... Because most people have the rest of their stuff in order, they have insurance, they have the registration up to date, they have their car in functioning order. And so one of the biggest things here is stop signs, and the other one would be speeding. But like my system had to come out to go be calibrated, so it should be put back in this weekend, and then I'll be able to run... Speed, but yeah.
Speed violations.
Yeah.
Yeah, we've talked about specific streets where we've had multiple complaints of people driving excessively fast.
Yeah, we need, when people report those, about a time. Because I go sit there at all different times, and I've never seen people.
Yeah.
You know, so if people are gonna report these things, if they can give us as many specifics as possible, hey, this is what the car looked like, this is about the time they do it, because a lot of them are daily that they do stuff like this. And if we have that, then that gives us information, we can go sit there around that time, kind of backed up into another street and see it ourselves. And then we can, you know, handle it from there, but without a black car on this road, I mean, I drive up and down the road throughout the, my shift, and I never see or hear anything.
So, is it November second that they start the new? So November second, you'll be starting your eleven and a half hour per day shifts, two on, two off, five on, five off. We're, we're very excited about that.
We're still gonna be, there's still gonna be a few hours every day where it's gonna be turned over to Tyler County, probably about...
I understand.
Five.
So I, just for the benefit of the audience, you've been to the class for code enforcement?
The first one.
The first one, there'll be one more after that, and you're required to take an exam?
We don't have an answer on that yet.
Okay.
I can do the job without taking the exam, I'm pretty sure, but if I have to take the exam, I have to take the exam, it's not a big deal.
Yeah. The big thing is that you don't, as a police officer, don't have to do the, the twelve-month mentorship or apprenticeship underneath someone else.
Yeah, because I can, I can already write citations under my license that I have as a peace officer.
Awesome, thank you very much.
Thanks, officer. Thank you, sir.
Good job, Baker. Mr. Marshall, David Marshall.
Good evening.
Howdy.
Howdy. As you said, we've got a lot going on, we'll go over it. I'm gonna change things up the way that I've been doing. Take a, take, take a little bit more progressive approach, instead of talking about what we did last month.
Okay, sir.
I wanna talk about what we're doing now, what we're gonna do in the future.
Okay.
That sounded good anyway, didn't it?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Before council members, you have this sheet. This gives you a, an indication of what we have going on in the next thirty-nine days. Just briefly to sum it up, and then we can go over some of it if you want to. Let me just run through, and, and let me make it clear too, that if y'all think it's a good idea, we can have this sheet. I can make copies, have them up here at the office, to where people can come get them and look at them to see if there's streets on this if they want to. But just a quick run-through. Sir Henry Drive, Fourteenth Street, Twenty-eighth Street, Galahad Loop, Lake Camelot Circle, Twenty-second Street, Little John, Charmaine Drive East, Lancelot Drive, Ivanhoe Drive East, Mill Creek Drive, Ivanhoe Drive West, and Sir Henry Drive. What we're gonna be doing is putting in one thousand six hundred and sixty-four linear feet of various size culverts from forty-two inch diameter down to twelve inch diameter. We're gonna be building twenty-seven headwinds for eighty-three point two culverts at seventeen different sites. I just ask everybody's patience. If you run against these things, just sit tight, we'll get you through it, we'll get you around just as quickly and safely as we possibly can. We're gonna try and do this with the least amount of disruption humanly possible. Any questions on that?
These culverts are across the road, the roadways?
Some are driveway culverts, some are intersecting road culverts, and yes, there are quite a few that are absolutely across the road.
So that road will be shut down while that culvert's being installed?
That section, we'll pick the next two roads intersecting to it accordingly, to where we can have a clearly marked, easy-to-follow detour, complete with all the signs that we need, right, left, turn around, go back if you're lost, that kind of stuff.
Sounds great.
So just, just for your benefit, this is part of the seven point nine million dollar, and, and the culverts are being purchased by the contractor and delivered to the utility department, it's being paid for out of the grant money, and we're doing the labor.
Yeah, I just wanted the public to understand that they, they saw that, that what the, is probably culvert's going across the roadway.
Sure, sure, they're, they're gonna be, like I said, across the road, but horizontally, next to it, across, under, around driveways, sidewalks.
Lot of excavator work then.
A lot of it, yeah, yeah, and there's gonna be quite a few dump trucks, we have to use a special material for the base on these things. I don't like depending on a third party, but we have to in this case to follow the specs on the contract. Right now, I am still awaiting word from Texas Material to give me the information that we need to order these culverts. And get ready to get this material that we need for it, and, and some other items on those forest accounts, so. He's supposed to shoot me an email tomorrow.
So that's the cement for the headwinds and everything?
Everything, yeah, 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 yeah. Okay.
Thanks, David.
Sure, any questions on that?
That culvert, the one that comes off of Ivanhoe Drive to Candy Cane Park?
Mm-hmm.
Underneath the road, you can replace that one?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
That's, that's a big one, isn't it?
Yes, sir, I think that's a thirty-two, thirty-six inch, yeah.
That's gonna be quite a, that's gonna be quite an undertaking, isn't it?
Most of the normal maintenance work will have to cease during that timeframe, because we're under the gun. They wanna start at a certain time, we're gonna do everything we can to have it ready for them, so we don't slow them down.
Yeah.
But if they don't get these accounts set up, it's on them.
Yeah, just, just a question.
Yeah, yeah. Anything else on that?
No, sir, thank you.
Okay.
Thanks to crew.
I will do that, I always do.
May I ask, are these your spreadsheet skills?
No, sir, that's the engineering spreadsheet skills. I wish I had time to do that, but I do not.
Well, to be clear, he did it on a Big Chief tablet, and then she brought in this spreadsheet.
She said this will not do for public, yeah, yeah. Okay, is that it?
Yes, sir.
All right, well, I will stand here and take care of the dams, I think we're next.
Before you start on the dams, I wanna say one thing to prelude into that. We are taking these dams very seriously. These, these dams are part of the livelihood of this community. They, the dams, if we don't have these dams, it's gonna affect our investment in our property and the neighborhood of, of this community. And so it's essential that we do what we take to take care of these dams, get them where they need to be. In the past, they have not been well-maintained, in the past, they have not had scientific or subject matter experts looking at them. And that's what we are working on right now, to get the best information to protect our investment in our, in our community. And so with that being said, I'm gonna turn it back over to David.
Thank you very much for that damn inspection. We're, we're good, and that's a lot of, of what I wanted to cover as well. As you said, these dams have not been thoroughly looked at in some time. And we attended the, the work class from TCEQ, learned a lot, picked up a lot, things we weren't doing, haven't been doing, that has to be done. And I might add shortly after that meeting, after talking to those people, they showed up here for a five-year inspection, which is a good thing, we need all the help we can get, we wanna start with an absolutely clean slate. By that, I mean, we wanna know everything that's going on with this dam, good, bad, ugly, indifferent, whatever. Get all the possible information that we can get from these folks. Then we brought in the engineers, particularly dam engineers. They are, I feel that way about all engineers, but these guys in particular were really dam engineers. They know their business, they spent full day, and I think then some, going over that. We also did the ground penetrating radar on the flat portion of those dams.
On Charmaine?
Of Charmaine.
Just Charmaine?
Okay, didn't do any of Galahad. It's gonna be who knows when, when we get all these reports back. But at this point, we're just kind of in limbo, waiting to see what, what those reports show or don't show. Okay? So if you see all these red dots and so forth out here on Charmaine Dam, it's okay. That was their markings to, to follow their lines and so forth. I was out there with them for some time, and I assure you, it's very, very thorough. Now, that being said, Will, correct me if I'm wrong on any of this. We are into LJA, I think at this point, for eight thousand one hundred and forty dollars?
No, the engineers are ten grand.
Okay.
That's where we are with the engineers right now.
Okay.
Ten grand.
Okay.
Then, and then we have the GPR.
Right.
At eight.
At eighty-one, okay, 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 okay. Okay, so we're spending a lot of money, but as, as Will stated before, it's something that has to be done. I hope y'all all agree with that, those dams are our, our lifeblood out here. Without them, we don't have near the place that we have now.
So I think we're on the right track, it's a process, we may not be able to get everything done all at once, but certainly we can address it and begin to take on bite-sized proportions of the task.
Clean it up and take care of what's... Clean it up and take care of what's, what's the worst first, and make sure they're absolutely perfectly safe and, and doing what they're supposed to do. Other than that, I guess that's it. You know, I've talked to you and Will about what we might use for some of the caulking, but we'll, we'll talk about that another time.
We need to talk to council. David and I have talked, and, and they were going to, and I talked to the engineer, they, they were gonna do Galahad Dam, the flat surface, which was nine thousand dollars. We feel it's prudent that we go back to the sloped areas of Charmaine and, and do ground penetrating radar on the slopes so we identify all the problems, and start on Charmaine and, and get that one, see where we are, what problems do we have, what we don't have, and fix it. Now, to come in and do the sloped areas on Charmaine, that's nine thousand two hundred and forty dollars. So you're looking at seventeen thousand three eight. So you have ten grand with the engineers, which will put you about twenty-seven, three eighty, and we take that out of the ARPA funds, and that'll leave us about seven thousand dollars left in ARPA funds that we can use on the dams. So that's what we'd like to do, is know, finish Charmaine up, get that under control before we move to Galahad, and then move to Galahad next with the funds we have left over.
Yeah, like, what we have now is basically a single dimension. With doing both sides of the slope, it'll bring up basically a three-dimensional picture that we can actually see anything and everything that's going on.
And know exactly what we have underneath. And I think that, I know, I know there are three voids on Charmaine.
Yeah. I, I don't think we've had this kind of information since the time it was built, so.
No.
It, it's something that, that needed to be done.
Was this a, a, Councilman Warren, a recommendation from TCEQ that, that Charmaine had to be the, should be the priority?
No, this came from the engineers.
Engineers, okay.
We got with engineers, and when we walked the dams, they were pointing out several things that may have occurred or we may need to do, and they suggested this.
Okay.
And, and so when they put this together, knowing our funds, I think that we would be well wise ahead to concentrate on one dam at a time, get it under control before we move to the next. They were least concerned with Galahad. I didn't, I didn't see the concerns when I walked, I spent the whole day with them, and were dating whatever it was. They didn't have the concerns on Galahad that they did on Charmaine, and that's why I'm saying this would be the best way to go. They spent a lot of time on Charmaine, and they were like, whoop, 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 and I'm going, okay. So that's, that's why I suggest we do this.
We could do a lot with money.
Sure, that's all it takes. That's, that's all I have for the dams and, and the roads.
We, we have, there were ten appraisals that had to be done. We had five of them that came back that were incorrect. I returned them to the grant administrator. We have seven of them now. There's a, we're waiting on one final one. It's the lake bed itself. It's hard to find meat comps on a dry lake bed. That's the challenge for the appraiser. So at this point, IPOA needs to, and I believe that they're gonna start the first reading next month. They have to do three readings and then take a vote. There has to be a quorum of homeowners present for the vote so that the city can move forward with the acquisition of the properties that are needed for the, satisfying the requirements of the, of the grant. Everything, I believe, is, is in, in agreement with one exception, that's Camelot Park. The road, the, there, there's a sliver of the road, of the parking lot that's gonna be taken up by straightening the road out a bit, and I've asked IPOA to put together numbers of what it's going to cost them to move the, the parking lot and to enlarge the park a little bit, because we're gonna be consuming parts of it. And that sliver was appraised at a thousand dollars. We need to be fair and, and considerate when it comes to the acquisition. The objective is not to take advantage of IPOA or cause them to, to spend money when it's us that's disrupting them. So, to answer the question, it'll be next year at the earliest. Mid to late next year. We have to go through the process of the, the readings and then the, the actual purchase. I hope that answers the question.
We need to get a direction from council. Do you want us to proceed with the ground penetrating radar on Charmaine, or how, how should we proceed?
Well, I have one question there. Obviously, Galahad isn't in the state of disrepair that Charmaine is, but with that being said, if we proceed on Charmaine, will Galahad's issues be neglected at any level by doing so?
No.
No, there's parts of the, no, I'm getting, that's Tristan.
No.
The engineers were not overly concerned with Galahad, but we, we, we will be addressing it in a scientific manner over time.
Right.
We're not, we're not, we're not gonna forego that. We're gonna do that. We're gonna get one under control first, and then we're gonna move to the next.
Makes sense to me.
The engineers wasn't that concerned with Galahad as they were with Charmaine.
Gotcha. Thank you for that clarification.
So do I have council approval to proceed with it, or should we?
Do we need to make a motion?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. I'll make a motion to proceed with it.
All second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, David. Thank you. Ms. Williams, you're up.
Planning and zoning had somebody bring a potential idea of doing a container home. After reviewing it, it was decided not to change any of the ordinances on that, but they ended up withdrawing their request anyway. And we are still working on defining what a shed is and how it's constructed before we actually change any of the ordinance as yet.
Okay. I have some specifications that I'll share with you after the meeting is over.
May I ask a question?
Yes, sir.
Is this in regards to using a storage-type facility for a home, or?
So this revolves back down to last year where they had Dan Skin buildings and how they're actually constructed and being turned into homes now. So do they meet international residential building codes or not? Even though they are clearly defined as a shed when they're sold, does that say that they never could be a home and livable? So we're doing research and looking into that.
So if, as long as it's six hundred square feet or more, if it's built to international building standards, it could be a shell, a cabin, cottage, and be, and build, be built out internally as a one-bedroom apartment or cabin, cottage, whatever. An average one-bedroom apartment is about six hundred square feet.
Understood.
The, the container, you know, you can see some really nice container homes, but you can build one from the dirt up for far less money than converting them into livable space. So the, the people saved us a, a lot of effort and research by withdrawing their application.
Yes, sir. But if it came up once, it will come up again. So after reviewing the shipping containers and what it takes to make one into a home?
Yeah.
No. It was decided against.
Thank you, ma'am. Consider for discussion updates to the employee handbook. Mr. Warren?
Thank you, Mayor. Hopefully, everybody had a chance to review the policy changes I proposed for the employee handbook. The employee handbook is a living document that is, is changed as needs arise. And we're looking at the employee relationship. The main thing is, is how we handle social security numbers and confidential information, and that is a key that I thought was important for us to focus on this one document here, employee relationship, that the city, the city of Ivanhoe's policy that social security numbers obtained from employees are confidential. And that's the key part of this, that we do not put that information out, and, and that is strictly for our use, for tax purposes, for payroll, but we do not disclose that information, and that needed to be in the policy manual. The other one, the correction policy, we added a third procedure violation that somebody could be suspended with or without pay to coincide with law enforcement because they could be suspended with pay or without pay depending. And depending on, on the policy corrections, we could put somebody on leave of absence for forty-eight hours with pay or without pay depending on outcome of violation. And that's what the performance correction was about.
Um. Say something. You can say something.
Okay. Well, I'll wait till I get there.
Okay, sorry.
Fine.
No, I'll wait till you get there. Sorry.
And then when we talk to the police officers, police department, about their eleven and a half hour days and their compensation time, the chief of police is gonna have to manage their hours. He is gonna have to manage their compensated time. So for the next year, they can roll over forty-eight hours into the next year of compensated time. So of September thirtieth or September thirty-first, if they come up and they've got ninety-six hours of compensated time they haven't taken, they can roll over forty-eight hours into the next year. So that was changed when we changed to their eleven and a half hour date. And then finally, the other correction that we'd like to talk about was the I think that was it.
Now, you had an employment of
Oh, employee, yes, thank you. Employment of relatives and domestic partners. We don't get many applications, and we need to take every application seriously that we come in, so we open the door to this, that somebody that is a relative or domestic partner could work for the city, but they can't work in the same department and have the same supervisor. So those are proposed changes we'd like to make and after we hear from our city attorney.
So as far as the employment of relatives and domestic partners, that specific section, the amendment can't go through right now. We need to review it and tweak some of the language. Some of it's contradictory, and some of them, some of it violates possible nepotism policies. So
Okay.
the rest of it looks fine, though.
All right, thank you. So if I can get a motion or we can put these into effect, everything, but the domestic partners?
Okay. I'd like to question on your performance on, you said third, you said with or without. Here it lists just without.
It'd be without pay.
Without pay. Okay, so it'll be solid without pay.
But police officers could be put on a
The forty-eight hour.
leave with or without pay depending on the situation. It'd be up to this.
The chief.
The chief.
Okay, so this is overarching for the city, and then the chief has his department that he can add.
And then they could coincide with it.
Okay.
Very rarely does that happen, but it could.
Will, may I ask where this language came from? Did it come from a, did it come from a personnel handbook or something, a similar city, or?
I belong to S.C.R., Society of Human Resource Management,
Mm-hmm.
who is a governing body for human resources, and it came out of their policy handbook.
Okay. It looked like it had come from some form of, of H.R. thing, so I was curious where, where it might have come from.
That's where I, that's where I go to do my research. They have a whole team of people, and I use them quite a bit.
Okay. It didn't look like necessarily you'd, you'd written this yourself.
I go to the gurus. They're the ones who did the testing when I got my P.H.R. and my human general, general's degree, so.
Thank you. It's a good resource.
Thank you.
So.
Is there a motion to move forward with these, except for the domestic partners?
I'll make that motion.
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Consider for discussion, action authorizing for the city to advertise for bids for Twenty-Second Street improvements, the TDA twenty-twenty-one CDVG grant. We got the go-ahead for Twenty-Second Street, and we need, we need to advertise for, bless you, we need to advertise to have the work done. We need to, and so I need a motion to go out for bids.
I need a motion to go out for bids for Twenty-Second Street improvement.
Second.
All second.
All in favor?
Mayor.
Yes, sir.
C.D., who are you gonna put the ad, that ad in the paper with?
That is a question that we have before the engineer at this point. In the past, we've run the ad in the Tyler County Booster and received no response. As a result, GLO made us go out again for a bid, which pretty much, well, it was over twice the expense. And so because council approved the ordinance or the resolution for utilizing Tyler County Booster as our official newspaper, but we included a section in there that it could be that if needed, we could go to another newspaper. And because the publication's not scheduled to go out until next Thursday, we'll find out the answer to that question. We'll probably be utilizing the Beaumont Enterprise after our experience in the past and it costing the city more money.
Thank you, sir.
It will cost more.
Yes.
Uh, but you don't have to put in the ad a week before the publication?
Correct. Beaumont Enterprise, if we get it in, the information to them today, by ten o'clock, they'll have it printed day after tomorrow.
So I hope we only have to do it one time this time?
Uh, sad to say, but we'll have to do it twice. So instead of the three hundred and thirty dollars approximate cost for Tyler County Booster, it'll be somewhere close to five hundred dollars for the two runs in the Beaumont Enterprise.
Okay.
And that's a cost, sad to say, that's not part of the grant fund that comes out of the city's coffers.
So it'd be more economical to go through the Beaumont Enterprise?
Absolutely.
All right.
Thank you.
Well, well, the likelihood of getting more than one contractor to bid on it is greater by going to the Beaumont Enterprise?
Absolutely. Exactly.
Okay. So we have a motion and a second?
I'll make that motion.
This is, what is this?
To go, to authorize the bids being sent out for Twenty-Second Street in the Beaumont Enterprise.
I'll second. Yeah, I thought so?
Okay. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Yeah, a little, woo. Okay. Consider for discussion, action, the bids received for Public Works Materials, Supplies, Contractors, and Emergency Maintenance Contracts. What? I already talked about that. I already talked about number eight. It's Charmaine, I mean, Camelot's being paved, and it, they may be done. And then I talked about the addition of the, of Camelot from Charmaine Drive South to Durwood. Thank you, though. So with regard to the, the, the bids that we sent out, we advertised in the paper for them. We got no responses. So we have not that many suppliers that we use that, that run up dollars. One of them is for the culverts, the other is for aggregate. And if it's fifty thousand dollars over a twelve-month period, we need to have, we need to have competitive bids. We didn't get any responses. Sometimes that happens. You end up with a single source, and it's just the way it is. So we talked about just running like we are with the current suppliers, but if we started getting close to fifty thousand dollars, we'd go out for bids. Well, that's kind of like closing the gate after the cows get out. We need to find a way to at least get a no bid or a no response from somebody with regard to the, the, the culverts and the raw material, just to have the documentation to show that we did do our diligence in trying to find suppliers that were competitive. So I'm kind of at a loss as to what to do with this.
Okay, at this point, since no bids were received, Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Then it allows the staff to request quotes from anybody that we can get.
Okay, that's what I, okay.
And we'll bring that back before council.
Okay. So do I have a motion to allow us to?
No, no motion saved.
No motion is needed?
No motion is needed? Okay.
So you can just proactively go out and look for sources?
Since there were no bids received?
I love it.
That's great. Probably, you're probably gonna get less better response that way than you are.
Probably, yeah. Because we have a relationship with these two distributors. Haley?
Not used to having to move the mic up, a little taller today.
You're wearing heels today.
Cheating, three inches. The financial documents, including bank and tax class statements, were sent to council earlier in the month. The accountant, financial reports and the reconciliation details for each account were emailed to council as soon as they arrived. The other items to report for the month are as follows. Think that's better.
Yes, ma'am.
Starting fiscal year twenty-twenty-four, the state comptroller direct deposited six thousand nine hundred and twenty-seven dollars on October thirteenth of twenty-three for sales and use taxes that were collected in August and reported to the comptroller in September. Last month, the sales tax deposit was seventy, seven thousand, not seventy, seven thousand sixty dollars. The sales tax collection for fiscal year twenty-three ended at eighty-five thousand seven hundred and twelve dollars, compared to eighty-one thousand seven hundred and seventy-four dollars for twenty-twenty-two. The budgeted income for sales tax collection was eighty-five thousand dollars for fiscal year twenty-three. The budgeted income for sales tax in fiscal year twenty-four is eighty-five thousand dollars as well. August advallarm taxes were received September twenty-fifth totaling five thousand nine hundred and nineteen dollars and fifty-six cents, with four thousand seven hundred and fifty-five dollars going to maintenance and operations, and one thousand one hundred and sixty-four dollars for the interest and sinking fund. The calculated balance of delinquent taxes stands at three hundred and twelve thousand, three hundred and forty-six dollars and eighty-seven cents as of September twenty-fifth of twenty-three, which is the aggregate amount from twenty-ten to present. The calculated balance of unpaid taxes, penalties, and interest per Ivanhoe North is five thousand three hundred and one dollars, remaining pretty much stagnant for the past three months. On the interest and sinking side of the September payment, brings the total advallarm collections to one hundred and thirty-four thousand, four hundred and eighty-two dollars and eight cents. There was a principal and interest payment made in August of a hundred and six thousand nine hundred and eighty-seven dollars and fifty cents, which reduced the bond repayment fund to eighteen thousand forty-one dollars, not including interest accrual. The balance is twenty-one thousand eighty-one dollars as of October seventeenth of twenty-three, and will carry to fiscal year twenty-four in preparation for the interest-only payment in February of twenty-five thousand, three hundred and eighty-seven dollars and fifty cents. Pledge securities at Citizen State Bank total one hundred and ninety-four thousand, four hundred and eighty-two dollars above the two hundred and fifty thousand dollar FDIC insurance, giving the city a cushion of three hundred and sixty-three thousand, two hundred and seventy dollars above our deposits. Our tax class interest rate has continued relatively stable, around five point one percent through most of the month. The remaining balance on the twenty-nineteen bond fund as of October eighteenth of twenty-three was three hundred and sixty-eight thousand, two hundred and sixty-three dollars and nine cents. The remaining amount payable to LJA Engineering will be nine thousand four hundred and eighty dollars, not including any interest that accrues until the funds are spent. The balance available for construction is three hundred and fifty-eight thousand, seven hundred and eighty-three dollars. We also received our annual Texas Municipal League statement, the insurance, on October first of twenty-three. In twenty-twenty-three, our payment was thirty-one thousand, nine hundred and sixty-four dollars and sixty-two cents, compared to the amount due for this period being thirty thousand dollars, nine hundred and seventy-six dollars and eight cents, and that is with additional coverage this year. Golf and Harrington PC, the outside auditing firm, has provided their engagement letter with an estimated cost of sixteen thousand, five hundred dollars for the fiscal year twenty-three audit. They have provided preliminary paperwork that we will be preparing in preparation for the audit, hopefully in December. The accountant monthly report for September arrived last Thursday, and the totals for the various department budgets are correct. The bank statements are reconciled, and we are comfortable that the September financials can be approved. Any questions?
Can you, can you repeat that?
The whole thing? The whole thing?
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you, ma'am.
There's a couple of items presented in the treasurer's report that I would like for the council to take individual action on those, and that will be the Texas Municipal League payment, because that's a thirty thousand, nine hundred and seventy-six dollar bill. And as stipulated in the ordinance that was passed a while back, anything that's over ten thousand dollars requires council's approval. So I ask for a motion and a second on that, so Debbie can catch it and a vote. And also on the payment for Golf and Harrington. If it's, if the council approves for that auditing firm, they provided our audit last year. They were very good to work with. Now that they know us, it will hopefully proceed fairly quickly this year, as was noted by Haley, that we're gonna try our best to get through this by the end of December, so we're not strung out all the way like we were last year into April, I think. So those two items specifically, if I can get, if the council would.
A motion, a motion to.
CD, shortly, quickly, could you, just for the record, can you quickly and briefly tell us what's part of the Texas Municipal League payment? What does that cover?
Okay, that covers all of our insurance, workman's comp, our vehicles, the errors and omissions for staff and the council, the whole gamut, general liability.
Yeah, replaced a chainsaw for the fire department.
Yes, public works, police department, and all.
Yeah. I just wanted it for the record.
Yeah.
Yes, sir.
We had a brand-new bad boy pay ten thousand dollars for it that caught on fire and burned up shortly after we bought it, and TML replaced it.
Perfect. Thank you.
Yes, sir, thank you.
You want separate motions or one motion?
Separate, please, sir.
I make a motion, we make a payment of thirty thousand, nine seventy-six oh eight to TML for our insurance.
Have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Now then, Golf and Harrington?
I make a motion for Golf and Harrington to do our audit at a cost of sixteen thousand, five hundred.
All in favor?
Aye.
I'd also like a motion to allow me the authority to sign the contract.
I amend mine, conclude the mayor's signature.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Motion carries.
I'll make a motion that we adopt the financials as stated for the month of September?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Yes, thank you, Haley. So. No, we need to go into executive session in just a minute. Yes, okay, we're going to adjourn for, to go into the executive session, we shouldn't be too very long. Can I get a motion to go into executive session?
I'll make a motion to go into executive session.
Second.
Second.
All in favor? I didn't know we had.